Like I said in the email, I mean, we've normally, at least I've never been privy to what's going to be on the executive session because I don't think you publish that information. Even the council members, at least it's never been the case that you have. So, you know, I mean, executive session ought to be something available to anyone that wants to call one to discuss a matter that falls under the COMA Act. And so in answer to your question, I mean, if that ought to be up to the person that wants to discuss it, if it's more applicable to a work session or to a, you know, regular meeting?
Just because the executive session's added to the agenda doesn't mean that it gets approved and we actually adjourn it to executives.
Yeah, but the problem is if you don't know what it is, I mean, it's a bag, it's for not a blunt to use.
Well, we never know.
Why would we never approve it? Because we don't know going in.
That's exactly right. That's why when we let the count of the baggage to what we were wanting to discuss, it kind of poisoned the well as to whether, you know, we would have that same protection.
And my guess is, I mean, if we were used with the lead to put, I mean, we'd be able to, anybody could add the executive session item if they just had the votes of the council on the council. Putting the session on.
Well, I think if you want to have an executive session put on the agenda, I think it needs to go in front of somebody that knows COMA a whole lot better than what we do to make sure that it is legitimate to be on the executive session before we put it on.
Well.
Looking right?
Go ahead.
All right.
I mean, I mean, we all know employee performance or, you know, something of that nature is, is unacceptable. I mean, the, you know, the, the list of what's allowable is not that detailed. And it should leave it open, I think, to, you know, I mean, how have we done it in the past? Who's, who's been the arbiter of whether something goes to executive session in the past?
We've, I, I, since I've been here, I've never had privy to that.
That's right. Exactly.
But it's staff. I mean, I've never asked for an executive session either, so I don't, usually staff says, hey, this is something we need to discuss.
The, the issue with personnel is controlled by policy and by rules associated with how we deal with personnel. And the supervisor and HR work through issues. And if there is a matter that needs to come before us, that needs council action, it gets raised to that level. We don't involve ourselves with personnel matters. If there's an issue regarding personnel, we go to the city administrator, interim city administrator. And then it's, it's handled with HR through that means. And if there's a need for us to know about that issue, whatever it may be, complaints, lawsuits, you know, whatever, then an item's placed on the agenda and then discussed. So that's the, the way the process works. The, but staff does not report to council. Staff reports to their direct supervisors who then report to directors who then report to city administrator. And that's the, that's the way the structure works. We don't, we don't involve ourselves with.
How, how do we verify what has been going on and whether it upholds the policies that we set unless we're able to discuss what the city administrator, what action is taken in order to rectify a problem?
That's why we have all season procedures. It's not a, that's why it's his job. It's not our job. It's not our job to do that.
It's our job to make sure he does his job then.
But legally though, I mean, if, this is really my question. I know Mary's not here, but legally, if I, if I had a situation where an employee has contacted me about a particular issue, I called Mary Bush, Mary says, we're handling it. And quite frankly, that's, that information is protected under employment laws.
Yep.
You have, I am not privy to that. So, I mean, is that truly the case?
Most governing bodies exclude themselves from any appeal process for employees for a lot of reasons similar to what's discussed. For reasons of liability, personal liability, et cetera. Most governing bodies have come to the conclusion that making the administrator the final arbiter of discipline for all employees below the administrator is the best practice. And that's what we've done at the county for the last fifteen or twenty years. And I mean, not most governing bodies that have an administrator usually handle it like that.
Well, I was just gonna say, so I guess my, my, and maybe this is something Mary needs to review with us or what have you. So, so to me, that's a difference, Mike, in saying, okay, so we've set it up that way versus legally, does employment law, what, what does employment law say? I mean, is, is it, in this case, would it be, listen, you're a council, you act as a whole, you have no right to individual employee information? Or is that a policy that we've established internally?
Actually, the former.
Okay, okay.
And you will see in this handbook for effective meetings, comments, and this one as well, which is the LKM's governing body handbook. If you're not in session, you're citizens, and you have no more authority than any other citizen. I mean, you're not acting as a council person as a singular entity. So you do not have any rights to that employment information. That's correct.
That's as an individual and thus.
Right.
You should not be able to call Mary Bush and, and say, in fact, that, that would be, you know, I think not a border because you're jumping over a chain of command. But again, you know, we should be able to know what, I mean, especially if it's a serious offense, what, what has been done. And, you know, I mean, let's face it, we are the ones who are accountable to the citizens. And how do we, how do we verify what has been taking place to make sure it doesn't happen again?
Because we have staff in place to do that, who's been charged with that responsibility and who has legal obligations to do so.
He's not, he's an independent contractor, though. He's not an employee. So.
He's the city administrator regardless of his employment status. And he has legal obligations to do so, just like any other entity. It's not our, it's not our place. It's not our responsibility.
Just, just, say we had a problem with Mike Press. Say Brian was unhappy with, with.
Something that.
Mike had done. Is, is that something that would be worthy of an executive session? Or would that have to go through Mary Bush who reports to Mike? And then, or is that, is that the type of thing that we could call an executive session?
The responsibility to the administrator is the council's responsibility and the mayor's responsibility, and certainly an executive session would be in order to deal with anything from the administrator, certainly.
Mayor appoints with approval majority and the mayor removes with the approval of majority is how that process works. So if the council number has an issue and it needs to come, the council number should probably come to me. And in which case I would then involve Mary Bush from the standpoint of legal requirements and making sure that everything we do is appropriate. And if she's not comfortable with it, then I'd contact our employment law council. Work through that person rather than, I mean, if that's a, if it's a situation that would put Mary at, at odds in doing so. But, you know, I mean, that's, these, I guess, are hypothetical.
Yeah, I don't think.
Issue, yeah, so. But, but yeah, I mean, that's the, that's the way, you know, the, the city administrator is appointed by the mayor with approval majority and can be removed by the mayor with approval of majority.
Different story if it's a, a matter that could cause legal implications.
And, and that's really what led me to say that. For anything in an executive session for personnel matters, it should definitely be run through, through HR for their legality purposes if nothing else. Just make sure we're not looking ourselves out there in front of something that we're not supposed to be.
Generally speaking, we'll have a conversation depending on what it is for attorney purposes. And generally, our attorney.
So if I want to ask for an executive session, I, I should make it clear that it's Mike that I want to talk about? Is that what I'm hearing? Is that?
No, I wouldn't think so. That's.
If that's who you want to talk about?
Not sure if that.
Okay.
Not. Our reason to.
And then who would I tell them to? Oh.
Well, if it's a mayor, it's about an employee, it could go to Mike.
Oh, right. If it's about him, who would it go to?
It would go to me.
And, and you can accept or deny that, that a gem I?
Yeah.
Well, okay, so.
Depends on the issue. I mean.
But let, let, I mean, let's get to the point. The point is, I think, that you're trying to make is, if you have an issue, let's just hypothetically say to a client, and you go to the mayor and say, I'd like to have an executive session to discuss this. I think he should be removed. Then I think, Larry, what you're saying is your concern is, it's an executive session, it's a private matter. It's not like if Dave says no, we're not gonna do it, that you can sit out here in an open meeting and say, I wanted an executive session and didn't get it.
Exactly.
So that, that's the issue.
So why, what is everyone afraid of? I mean, allow any item that a council member wants to put on the agenda, whether it be a work session agenda or another agenda? I mean, we are the, you know, the governing body. Where do the policies?
Because.
So what is the harm in, in allowing, you know, this open communication policy to address concerns?
There's, there's no, there's no prohibition to open communication. What we're talking about is conduct of the business of the city regarding these agenda items. And if we have five people wanting five different things on every agenda, then we won't get anything done. So we need to rationally triage items that should go on an agenda or should not go on an agenda based on priorities set by the majority of the council, based on actions set by the majority of the council. There's really, for example, there's no need to talk about items that staff can't reasonably be, be expected to work on based on their current priorities. So to just, to have that, just to just have that, say, yeah, I want to put an item on agenda, yeah, I want to put an item on the agenda, it needs to be vetted. There needs to be a process for vetting. And, and because then it's, it just has to have order to the process in order to, to keep the efficiency of the organization going.
Let me, if I could get real quick, I guess, you know, we used to do and have in the last couple meetings, the staff have anything for council, does the council have anything for staff? They don't seem to be doing that anymore, which is, is fine. But, I mean, if there are items that people want to get on the agenda, should there be a time during the meeting where we can say, I'd like to have this item added for a work session? And we've got the whole governing body sitting here and we can make a determination whether or not we want to have that.
And we can, and we can feed that through staff. Staff can make that into a report that says it's been raised, the issue's been raised, and we want to talk about this item. We want to talk about this item. And, and then if everybody says, yeah, let's talk about it, then off we go and we put it on a work session, a work session agenda. I think the process works that way now. I guess the question is, you know, beyond this executive session issue, I don't recall any item that's not been discussed at a work session or at a council.
Well, I mean, house savings accounts, I've tried to put that on, as you know.
It was on, it was. We talked about it.
Well, we never had, we never had, we never had the expert that, you know, the renowned nationwide expert.
Yes, renowned nationwide expert. No, we didn't have your expert, Larry, but we talked about it. We had our expert. We had our.
We had our contract.
We had our provider of those accounts that knew everything, that knew everything about that account, that understood the laws associated with that account, and we talked about it. It was on the agenda. And it was discussed.
We had, again, an expert that's been serving the city for twenty-two years without a second, without ever having been. So obviously, you can see why we would need to entertain an outside expert. If anyone else has an outside expert that's, that's well versed in HSAs, then, you know, I would listen to who they are. But, but having the same person who's had the contract for twenty-two years come in and tell us when they are going to make less money if they do allow HSAs, especially if it's a.
No, no, you're making, no, 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 no. You're making value judgments about the vote. You're making value judgments about the motivations of those individuals for which you have no idea what those motivations are. The fact remains is, again, you asked for the item, you put on the agenda, it was put on the agenda, it was discussed by the whole council.
And that's.
And it was done. You asked for it, it was on.
And I, I'll talk to the HSA thing, which I know we're not trying to talk about, but I actually thought that they did say that was the most beneficial program. It was just how we got there was, should we go to it tomorrow or should we migrate employees to it? But I think that, that at least that two people, as I recall, there was a Indian woman, both agree that the HSA was the best way to go. However, it was how we got there. And my understanding from that conversation was that Mary Bush was going to put a team together with council representation to figure out what is the best way to get us to move in that direction.
And honestly, we were just talking about that today because we know it needs to be done. And it was supposed to be done by January first, March, we get, but we'll make it plenty ahead of the budget. So we'll be coming and looking for people to appoint to that from the council for that discussion. So. But our pool will head in that direction. We had that conversation in our last board meeting. It's that realistically, we're a cool to operate 2014 forward. That's where we have to be. So we're gonna be having a lot of those conversations because your pool is in that too. So.
So back to the items of executive session, you can certainly understand, Mayor, when, if I asked to, to have an executive session about a personnel issue and it happened to involve Mike Press, how you would be, it would be somewhat of a conflict of interest that you appointed him.
I was not appointed by the mayor, I was appointed by.
Well, well, your, your press release, well before you consulted the council as to which direction we should go regarding the hiring of a city administrator occurred with Mike Press's name in it. So, I mean, obviously, it would be, it would seem to be a conflict of interest if I asked for a.
Every, every city administrator is appointed by the mayor.
Not in every city. But.
Well, I don't know. I mean, it depends on the city. But every, every city administrator in Gardner, Kansas, the city for which you serve, the one that matters. Every city administrator in Gardner, Kansas has been appointed by the mayor. So, yeah. Every city administrator.
Either way, it was your choice. It wasn't the council's. I mean, we, we had input on the other interviews and things like that.
You voted no. Everyone else voted yes. Everyone had input. Your input was no. Everyone else's input was yes.
Either way, I'm uncomfortable with you being the final decision maker on whether we can talk about employee issues, personnel issues, and not having everyone else involved in that discussion. So is anyone else uncomfortable with that?
I, I've never, I've never had an issue. I've never had an issue. It requires an executive session from my perspective. So I, I, it just hasn't been real good for me.
Right. No, I've never had an issue with it in, not at all. So Chris?
My experience has been, even with public companies, the disciplinary action, you know, that, you know, finds its level where, where it ends. I don't have experience with it being an executive session item, you know, unless it does fall to a, a level of, you know, some kind of illegality or, or some type of, you know, people matter. That requires, you know, private counsel.
Okay. So if I understand consensus then is that for matters that are related to individuals who report through staff to the city administrator, that the current process for items on reaching executive session and coming to our attention is adequate? Okay?
Okay, very.
Well.
Go ahead.
Providing that if, if we've got an employee that's, that's been working their way up, I mean, there is a chain of command that needs to be followed. Let's say somebody that's out three meters, has a problem, supervisor, department head, HR, Mike Press, still unhappy, wants to petition the council and make their case.
Not our place. Not our place.
Whatever goes to you, our personnel policy for each of us should stop this city administrator. So, and really legally, you guys never want to be involved in that. That is just.
That's, that's what, that's what I figured, but.
No, our policies are for each of us to address that.
Yeah. But yeah, when you're fighting a chain of command, that's, when you get up the chain.
Governing board, governing board, my companies do not involve themselves in personnel matters. It's, it's the governing boards, so.
Just looking for clarification.
Okay. Regarding the other item on the conduct of meetings, as I understood, there's really, council would rather study it more, talk about it.
Yes.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I guess I do, Larry brought up a good point earlier. You know, we, it seems like, well, it was, the only time that we've ever used anything from our other rules is when we've done a call to question since, in my experience, right? So it's not consistent. You know, it's not like, you know, we don't limit, we don't, you know, have the formality unless, quite frankly, we want to stop the conversation.
And most governing bodies do work that way. They don't have a copy of Roberts' rules in front of them that they follow. They invoke it when needed, but you do follow it in ways you probably don't know. The structure of the agenda and all that sort of thing comes from that. But, yeah. But, yeah, there's, you know, no one that I know that sits there with a parliamentarian in a book and says, oh, no, no, I can't do that, you gotta do this. It's that they're generally followed as a guideline. And then individual practice and or policy and procedure of that organization are usually invoked for those areas that Roberts doesn't really address adequately for government service type work. So it can be a combination of things. You know, it can be a variety of ways of going about it. And again, the, the, the outcome that, that is to be achieved, obviously, is a very efficient and effective meeting process where decisions are made based on good debate and civil procedure and orderly conversation about business and things of that nature. So you kind of do follow some of the tenants of Roberts without perhaps knowing them. But that doesn't mean we should sit there and look at the book either. We should probably come up with something that's easily understood, useful, usable, flexible, and allows you to conduct business the way you generally would like to conduct business. Kind of an open environment, transparent to the public when you make your decisions, things of that.
Is there a chance that we could be able to have this as a discussion item at the next council meeting? Or are we gonna push it off until January?
We can discuss it at the next council meeting if you wish.
Christie will be joining by phone. So.
But I can, I can send my information to you, Mike.
Absolutely. And I'll have it for it.
Okay.
Okay. Just my thoughts and comments.
And, and yeah, we can go back over the community policy as the, the last one after we've gone through the books. Does anybody have a problem getting through the book?
So is it general discussion or not? General discussion and direction to formulate a policy or?
So, yeah, that's my, are we gonna like formalize this as how we're going to operate?
I don't think you're ready to adopt a list. I think you need to have a thorough discussion where it's fully vetted, and there's a level of comfort with the information, and then you make a decision and the majority decides.
And that'll include everything, setting the agenda, everything, please?
It would be inclusive of everything that's really contained in this government procedure.
So we'd be able to discuss it again the first meeting available in January after, after the December?
Yeah, I mean, you can discuss it for as long as you feel the need to before you make any formal adoption of anything. And it may take us some time to, you know, put some pieces together and make that happen. To where you can then review the whole thing and say, all right, this is the final draft. Here's what we think we captured from what the council was saying they wanted and put that in front of you. Didn't give us time to vet it and to make sure that it's inclusive and has things that the majority of the council may have wanted.
And you'll be able to get copies to folks that want to read that other document. I don't know how many copies we have.
We, actually, the stuff's rather expensive. We only ordered a few. We can order a few more. We didn't want to spend a ton of money on them, but.
I would just route.
We can route this.
Route it.
And we'll, I think we have two, maybe three of them. We'll hand that around and give you a chance.
I'll give it to you whenever. Okay. All right.
It literally takes twenty minutes for me to.
Okay, I figure it's probably not.
It's not a huge document.
Very good. Before we, before we close, a brief update. I've had actually four individuals express interest at the open council seat. I am not contacting anyone and encouraging anyone to apply, but it's not, I don't believe that's something that I should be doing in this particular case. So I will not. Based on schedule, it will be the second meeting in January for first possible appointment because our, well, with, with normally scheduled first meeting, there's no items on the agenda at this, at this point. We will not have a January, second, third, or third, January, fourth meeting. So that will be plenty of time to review and discuss and meet with, with individuals. So.
Great. So can we just also, so if, I'm assuming if anybody has anybody, they should have them contact you.
They should contact me. I am, I am, I'm not actively seeking, I think, that the individuals should, the, the four individuals that contacted me were proactive and felt they wanted to serve. And I, and I thought that was, that was appropriate. They were not encouraged, they were not asked, they were, they just came directly. And I found that perfectly appropriate. I found that perfectly appropriate, you know, having four to choose from is more than, my perspective, more than enough, especially given the individuals and so, but if there's others that, that express an interest, I'd be happy to talk to them. The process again, a reminder is, I make the appointment with approval of majority. The statute requires and the council has not charted out of the statute, the statute requires that if the majority the council denies an appointment, they have to.